Mr. Reba, roll call.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mrs. DeCosmo.
Here.
Mr. Fiume.
Here.
Mrs. Kay.
Here.
Mr. Moholic. Mrs. Garcella.
Here.
Mr. Shemansky.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoekland.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
Kay, I'd like to announce that the following executive sessions were held, June 12th. We had an executive budget meeting. June 18th, another executive budget meeting. Public announcements and recognitions, Mr. Uplinger?
Yes. As I constantly say, it's always a great privilege and honor for me to be able to honor some of our students that have gone above and beyond the call of duty, so to speak. So, one of them in particular, I said tonight I'm going to embarrass her. So, Megan, why don't you come on up here? Megan Kernis has received a perfect score on her math PSSA. That is...
I guess I just would say thank you to Mr. Rush, my math teacher, for helping me through the school year to get this achievement, and my mom for supporting me through everything.
One more. And Mr. Rush is here this evening. He joined us. Our second award winner, Alice, come on up here, Alice Banks. I received an email, goodness, probably March, I would think. Is that when you started the process, roughly March? March of this year, from the Dominican Republic, asking for students to submit an essay. And what took place and what are the awards that came with that submission, if the student were to win, was she received a medal, a certificate, and free flight and accommodations to the Dominican Republic. Have you already met the president yet? You're on your way. You're on your way. She will be meeting with the president of the Dominican Republic, and she will also receive a four-year scholarship paid in full tuition. It's all yours. And I do have a certificate.
I would like to thank the Hazleton area school district for taking into consideration my academic dedication.
And the same, if you would like pictures with... Come out front. Thank you. One more picture.
So next will be public comment directed to board.
Well, I would like to, as we're recognizing our students, I'd like to put a special thanks out to our student athletes that had a great season, not all the teams this year, they had a great season, and I don't think, you know, a lot of people, you know, we don't recognize them, and I'd say that great season to our student athletes. They had, one made it to the state championship, our track team, our baseball teams, all the student athletes, I'd like to recognize and thank them for a great season.
I agree with you, and you sort of stole my thunder, because I was going to mention that later on, but, I mean, every athlete we have in the school district is, has accomplished, and we appreciate, accomplished great feats, and we appreciate them all, and especially our girl softball team who came in second in the state, so I would not acknowledge those, them all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. Public comment directed.
Mr. Buscher. He's the only one that signed the book.
Oh, Mr. Buscher.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to comment on items 95 and 96 on the agenda. Regarding item 95, we are all very saddened by the news that the YMCA is closing. It's a huge loss to our community, and I believe, from what I understand, that the after-school kids academy would pick up the YMCA program, the before-and-after-school program. Is that guaranteed to the parents, that if it is accepted, that this agreement will last for a fiscal year? Is there a time limit on it?
What we're looking at doing is piloting it in each of the buildings for this school year. See how it goes, see if there's any hiccups that we encounter, any issues that we need to tweak, any of the concerns from families that we may have, and then continue it through, maybe possibly into the summer, who knows? You know, it depends on how that school year works out.
The only reason, and thank you for that, the only reason I'm concerned is that if you consider from a parent's point of view that they lost their daycare as of July 1st, if nothing happens to save that organization, that we would step in and pick it up, and then lose it again if it turns out to be not profitable to the district.
Good point.
And that would be a double blow to those parents. I think a guarantee of a specific amount of time would really put their minds at ease. And as far as the per-student fee, that's well in line, from what I could see, with what other daycares offer, so it's an interesting proposal. Regarding item 96, I'm sure that I'm speaking to the choir here, but regarding the library modernizations and possibly conversions into classrooms, which is on the other page of the agenda, page eight, I just hope that we're being really careful not to take any library space, because as I said at the, I believe it was the April meeting, my concern as a former teacher is that we don't want to send a message to the community that libraries aren't important, because we're going to chop them up, we're going to close them. And I'm sure you're not planning that, but just if we could be very mindful that we're not going to close any libraries, or...
Yeah, and I think...
And I know you've said that.
Fifteen seconds remaining.
I think, Mr. Buscher, we had a public hearing on the building program, and it was explained, and we had librarians from all of the district there, and they were happy with what we presented, but Mr. Uplinger could elaborate if you'd like.
Sure, and what we're definitely, we're definitely going to bring them back to the table. We'll definitely bring our staff back to the table.
They're going to be included in the project, and it's not going to be elimination of any libraries.
Correct.
And actually, one or two of them aren't even going to be touched.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Need a motion to approve the board meetings. Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Roll call, Mr. Reba.
On the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Motion to approve the treasures report for May of... Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question. Mr. Reba.
On the treasures report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Mr. Uplinger.
Great, thank you. It's with great pleasure, I introduce you, the president of the LCC, Mr. Tom Leary. He's here this evening to present an opportunity for the district.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for this opportunity, and I promise that we will be brief. As you know, one of the great challenges that we face today, because of the improving economy, are companies desperately need workers, and particularly in the trades and technologies, this has been a situation, and in our conversations with so many individuals in the greater Hazleton area, Can Do particularly, we find that we need to train and educate more students with the necessary competencies and skills to fill positions. And one of the challenges with that, obviously, is number one, to persuade high school students the great opportunities in these programs, as well as making it logistically possible to have a convenient location. So, you know that, I'm sure you realize, Luzerne County Community College has a strong presence in the Hazleton area, and what we are proposing this evening is that we could partner with the school district, particularly through the Career Technical Center, so that we could provide, both in our early college program, meaning students who are currently enrolled in high school, an opportunity to have hands-on training and receive college credit, as well as those who are graduating, to be able to provide them with the opportunity to get some, to become acclimated to what these programs can offer, because many of these programs have great sustaining wages, they have great opportunities in terms of jobs. So I would like to continue our presentation by introducing our two vice presidents this evening, our vice president of enrollment management and student development, Rosanna Reyes, and our vice president of workforce development, Sue Spry.
We just wanted to provide a little backup to what President Leary had just set out on the screen. We have a few PowerPoint slides, is LCC's mission, vision, and goals, and it's not unlike Hazleton area school districts, I'm sure, mission, vision, and goals, which is to educate, to bring community and economic development to the region. We can advance, thank you. The workforce needs in Hazleton area, basically, the need has to do with major business expansion. This isn't new, in Humboldt and Valmont, industrial parks, and other areas in the Hazleton area. Not enough skilled workers to meet the business demand. The third one is the need for workers trained at all levels to fill openings. It's insufficient to think that only our high school graduates can fill our needs, only college graduates, only those adults in the workforce. We need everyone working together. So what we're proposing is an industry education partnership, Can Do, the local economic development organization, the Hazleton area school district, and Luzerne County Community College. Our goal is to develop a qualified workforce to fill well-paying jobs in the Hazleton area, and basically, the two bullet points indicate this type of workforce supports current and potential employers coming into the area, and you probably know that Can Do is an organization that tries to attract new business to the area and retain the business we have. And the strategies we're looking to implement to reach that goal include all of Hazleton area school district programs and education that's provided, early college dual enrollment, that Rosanna will speak to briefly, college coursework and technical areas of study, which is the type of middle-skills occupations that are growing in the area, work-based learning and customized training for those who are already in the workforce. So those are our strategies. Thank you.
And so I'll give you the opportunity to just speak to you a little bit about our early college program. And the reason why we think this is the nine ways to create a path, so we have right now already almost 100, excuse me, 1,000 students throughout Luzerne County, taking college courses while they're in the high school. And so we love the opportunity that it provides, it creates an opportunity for true college credits. These are students who are either attending one of our locations or within their schools with faculty that have been approved, and need the same qualifications, our teaching faculty, providing them instruction. We know that it encourages them to excel and to begin to take paths in careers that perhaps they were not considering before. It provides those explorations before they even complete high school, and allows them also to earn those college credits and be able to save time to complete high school students in the high school years. So we think that if we couple not only this early college program, but our workforce development, and the industry that also have approached us in this partnership to be a part of these pathways, we can really leverage this early college program, as well as our programs and your CTC programs combined, to not only expedite the fastest to a career, but also save students money, gain industry credentials, and be able to meet the needs of your local industry. We can go to the next slide. Here's just a quick, I wanted to share this with you, because I think it's very powerful. These are graduates of 2019, junior graduates. These are the school districts that are participating, whose students have earned more than 15 college credits while in high school. You can see just right there how many students are actually needing that, and we have several who completed whole associates before they finish high school. And why is this so impressive to us? Why we are so committed to expanding access to education, to saving money, and to create a path to career, is because this economical pathway, it allows them for them to not duplicating efforts, any time they're learning something in high school, that also been qualified for college. It allows them to again, be able to move to industry in a more speedy way. People, the next slide, here's what our early college tuition costs. When we offered the course within the high schools, $40 credit, that's about $600 for 15 college credits. And I know for many of us, we know when high school is cold, something like that, what if they're drinking? And imagine today, with today's situation. That means that we have high school students who are now, they're essential to earn a whole associate degree with less than $14,000, $4,000. An entire 40,000 credit, absolutely 30,000. And so that is why we feel that this is an opportunity that provides access, saving money, and again, using all of our resources and leveraging that to meet the needs of the industry, while we also are guiding students without lots of debt, which we know has a negative impact on our future, we all know that. As parents, we also look for opportunities that can make education more attainable. We also have experience in these types of partnerships, so just wanted to just briefly share with you, a couple of things that are happening this summer. We have a manufacturing camp, where we're bringing students on campus to explore all the different careers that we have in manufacturing. It's a summer boot camp, they come in, they explore, it's hands-on, they will earn one college credit, it's only $129,000 for the entire program, it's one week long, and it's again, very hands-on. We're also doing it in communication arts, and also this year, we added our business summer camp, and one of the great things about each one of these camps is not only are they doing hands-on, but for example, in the business, they're actually going to spend a whole day of potential financial experience, and just looking at all the different careers in finance, and being exposed to some of the opportunities that, but frankly, many times they don't even know or are not aware of it. And so we again, create these kinds of partnerships to promote academic attainment, help them earn college credits, and really promote just that career pathway.
The last slide, we just wanted to show that we have much experience in the area of partnering. It's basically, very few entities can go it alone at this point, right? We all need to partner together and collaborate. So these are just some of the programs that we are involved in right now and are looking toward growing. So we have a lot of experience, we work very closely with school districts, but also with industry and this project as an example, trying to create that pathway, so students can not only accelerate into college, but also be available for business and industry in the area in a more efficient way.
I was going to ask, is there a possibility of the students, when they're in some of these programs, to also have internships with some of the businesses? Is that incorporated within some of the class courses that they take?
Yes, so that work-based learning was a reference we used, and that's what we mean by that, is actually going out into industry and applying the skills that they weren't in classroom, yes, we're very limited in that.
I think it's, I love this idea. Could I just ask you how you get the students interested in like working, do you come into our, you'll come into our school, our career center, or our high school, explain to the students, possibly take them to the plants and show them what's available, and how much money they can earn, is that you, you know...
Yeah, all of that, right, yes, all of those, multiple marketing strategies around that, because honestly, the pipeline is dwindling. We really need to get more people involved in this, as we're hitting that retirement bubble of a lot of people in those skilled areas leaving the workforce. So it's about peers who have made it, and talk with the students, it's about going to industry, it's about bringing industry in and talking, and actually, the students being in internships and kind of work-based learning.
I'll answer that also, please, we value the feedback from the educators within the schools, and we know that they have the most amount of leverage in terms of impact on students, so by engaging your teachers in this town, I think we can really create that path in more effective ways.
So this year, for the first time in the career center, we're going to offer a program of dental assist. Now, how will that work with, because I know you have a fantastic program, so how will that work? Will our students be able to get credits?
Right, so another aspect of this that we actually didn't mention is something we call articulation. So it's going from a career center or high school into college, and the faculty work together to align the curriculum, so that a lot of students would get advanced credit. And that's a broad answer, but that's kind of how it would work in general, for many programs that Hazleton area does have.
We really don't want to duplicate efforts for students. If they learn and scale, we recognize that.
Is this like a tri-partnership, of this like, for instance, does Can Do have any, anything with this?
Yes.
Us, the college, and Can Do all work together?
That's right, that's right. We were thinking of it really as a continuum, because Can Do mostly obviously works with adults and businesses, and I mean, that's the outcome we're looking for. So we're looking for the education and training to prepare people, and then to ultimately stay in the area.
So where is the connection between our students and your school now? How do they connect?
Well, we have a large footprint with Key and Luzerne County, and we're proactively student and available major for better, and a growing number on our main campus. What we're hoping to do with this is to bring this before they even finish high school, to make a connection prior to completion, so that they can expedite the job to that degree of that industry credential, that any of them may be willing to move into the Can Do industry.
So it's for any program that you offer, though, correct?
We're starting with pilots around more the manufacturing areas, the technical skills areas, although we have articulations in many different areas. Early college could be general courses, could be history and math and English, and it could also be those that are run through the career center.
Just to add, we, Dr. Patty, Mr. Reba, and myself, met with the team at LTRIC last week, or the week prior, I'm sorry. We did invite, Mrs. Herman was unavailable to go with us, so we did, we sat, and we talked about the same exact things that you're hearing this evening, and then the team also came down on Monday of this past week to tour our facility, and I need to say that I was very impressed by what I saw at, I call it LTRIC because of my old Schnecksville background of what's over there, but LCC, on our end here, I was very impressed by the quality of the equipment at the facility, as well as the instructor that took us around on the tour. So I thank you again for allowing us to do that, and thank you for coming and talking.
I want to thank the superintendent of administration, because they were very positive in their response in terms of disengagement, and when I look at, when I look at opportunities for students, and we look at this particular one, there's only a positive outcome from this type of partnership, and it's very difficult for anyone, college, high school, or the industry, to be able to achieve this on their own. So this is a great opportunity, we think this partnership will create this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Uplinger?
Under, or on page one of the agenda...
Brian, let me just say one thing before we start. We got the agenda around 5:00 or 4:00 the day before yesterday. There really wasn't a lot of time to go through this and look into board docs to get a lot of answers, so I'm going to ask for a little patience, because I have questions on some of the stuff.
Sure.
So, just so, when you're putting a bunch together, you know, there may be separate questions in between that.
Sure, no problem. On page one of the agenda, under curriculum instruction, approve items 1 through 22.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Garcella on the question.
Yes. On number three, I see doctor, and I don't want to mispronounce her last name, Seawak?
I believe so.
Is coming in to volunteer to do chemistry tutoring in the district. I'm just wondering, I think it's great, I don't know her, and I think it's fantastic. I'm just wondering who she is, and what we know about her and this idea of tutoring.
My understanding, and Mrs. Ernst isn't here this evening, the, my understanding is that she's been in prior, prior years with us, and I don't know, Mr. Petron, if you know anything about Mrs. Seawak?
I don't.
Okay. My understanding again is that she's been with us years prior and has done the same thing, that she comes in in the evening, or evening after school, and provides free tutoring to our students in chemistry.
I think if, at some point, we can maybe just get a little bit more information about her, maybe have her come to a meeting...
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
And talk to us. On number four, for the accept $1,000 on the Action for Healthy Kids grant, I, first of all, thanks to the teacher for going out there and writing that grant, but I guess, again, my question is, how will that work? They're going to receive $1,000 for this grant, which was written for H-Tell by the physical education teacher, and the grant will be used to promote physical fitness and healthy eating. Is that going to be like an after-school program, or will that be during the course of the day, or...
That's during school. Kristin Petrowski had gotten that in previous years, and they provide snacks for the kids, various things, either fruit or vegetables, and then there are particular exercises and like competition that she has, that she does with the kids.
Okay, so the grant that's coming, because I know our food service does a lot of that with the meals, and the kids are free, I guess, just who will monitor the grant, the way the grant is used?
There's, at the end of the grant, there's a requirement for the completion of the grant, so to speak, that Mrs. Perkuski would have to, Petrowski, I'm sorry, would have to provide the grantee, or the grantor, information on how the process... the grantee or the grantor information on how the process took place, how the, how the grant was implemented based on what was proposed in her grant. She would have to, she would have to account for every dollar, she would have to account for every piece of information that was in that grant.
So I guess, is the principal the person who oversees it?
Yeah, he would oversee the teacher.
Yeah, she has gotten that, I think, the last, I think, two years herself. She has applied for that grant every year.
Okay. On number six, Brian, Science 2020.
Yes.
Can you just give me a little?
Sure, that's an interactive science program that individuals from Penn State, Hazleton assist us with in the Early Learning Center and at Arthur Street. They come in, provide hands-on activities with the students. I was actually in Early Learning Center, the one afternoon, or the one morning that they were, they were there, they had cocoons and butterflies and the kids were doing songs. It was just an amazing, amazing process.
Is it part of the district's curriculum?
It is. It fits directly in with our science curriculum.
So what's, they're looking to implement at school-wide? What is the?
Right now, it's only in grades kindergarten and first, I believe. They want to look at second grade now.
Okay, so are we approving tonight to let them implement it or are we just?
To expand it, really.
Expand it.
Is that what we're, is that what this is about?
Yeah, we've already implemented, we're just expanding.
So can I ask, I have a question then. When we're saying to expand to include teachers, so then they would be paid at the contractual rate, so do we have a cost of what that would cost the district?
Is everything is gone through Penn State and any kind of activities they do or any kind of supplies, the grant, the grant provides them through Penn State.
Right, there's no cost to the district.
Still, we're not paying the teachers?
No.
If they're working after hours like the contract states?
The grant takes care of that.
Brian?
But are they still getting their contractual rate even if Penn State is paying or?
Well, they're doing, they're doing different type of programs, training programs and things like that. It's a volunteer and they're trying to expand it to more and more teachers because there's not only activities and things for the students to do, but they also, big part of their program is community outreach, getting parents involved in, in the educational process and things like that.
So when you say expanding, expand it to include teachers, the teachers are on a volunteer basis?
Yes.
Okay.
So Brian, seven, eight, and 10, it ends by saying pending approval by the solicitor. I thought we talked about this a few meetings back where we said that before it comes to the board, it should be prior, it should be approved already. I mean, these are policies that, that need to be reviewed, get his okay, and then come for approval. We're kind of doing it backwards. We're approving it as a board, but then it's not actually approved until Attorney Slusser reviews it. So I thought we asked that and I thought that that's the way it was gonna work. But as I look through this agenda, there's probably 10 areas that say pending approval by Attorney Slusser. And the end of that is, we never get noticed that it's been approved or not, that he, that he reviewed them and actually, actually had reviewed them and approved them. So they're kind of out there limbo.
Right. What the process looks like is, the items that come to the agenda sometimes are just coming to us in a very short amount of time and then providing that information to Attorney Slusser or to Attorney Slusser's office. And getting it back is certainly difficult in a, lack of a better term, timely manner because of the, sometimes the large size of the documents that are being sent. Once those items are approved, once Mr. Slusser signs off or one of the attorneys in his practice signs off on them, we do keep a record of that. And what we could do is provide you notification that those items have been approved.
Or just hold them off until they get approved. I know Chris spends a day here.
Yes, he's here twice.
Twice a week.
Twice a week. Yes.
So, I mean, from our, our people in the schools, if they need to have this stuff done, they should have it done in a timely manner though.
Right.
So is he here two full days a week?
He's here two half-days in the morning.
Two half-days?
Yes.
But also, isn't some of this stuff time?
Time-sensitive, yeah.
Sensitive also, as far as some of the software and that. So you'll just have to approve some of the.
Well, we should.
Well, if we approve it and then he doesn't approve the item, where does that leave us? So if these are time-sensitive and we've approved them with our vote and then the solicitor looks them over and says, well, this isn't good for the district, where does that leave us as far as opening ourselves for litigation?
And I would have to ask Mr. Rockman if there's anything that would preclude or put the district in a predicament if the document isn't approved by Attorney Slusser and then he, he or you or the firm finds something in there that would need change in the document or anything like that.
Well, it could always be subsequently approved as revised by the board.
Following, okay.
So wouldn't it just be easier if everything went, got approved, and then came to the board?
It would, yes. Yes, it would.
I'm sorry, I don't, can you just introduce me? I don't, not really sure who you are, sir.
I'm Rockman, from the Slusser.
Thank you.
On 16, there's a waiver of expulsion proceeding agreements. What is that?
Those are a waiver that were, they were written by Attorney Evans. They were given to us to look at the ability to go to the parent, okay? Instead of sending you through an expulsion hearing, we have the opportunity to place you rather than going through that process. If there's a more immediate issue that we need to remove the student from, from the school, we have that availability to us.
So it wouldn't have to go to a expulsion hearing?
No. If the parent agreed, if the parent agreed to say, okay, yeah, I agree with you, let's, let's just move the child to Plains or Alted.
All students or just special needs?
No, it's special needs and regulars.
And regulars, yes.
Well, if I could just chip, to there real quick, this was all, with students of special needs, even if they're expelled, would he still retain the responsibility to educate? So basically knowing that, it's just, let's have to have an agreement right now where and how we're going to educate now. So I believe this would only involve students of special needs.
Mr. Mahalik, we do have some, there is one of the waivers that is for regular ed too.
Okay.
That we could do that.
I reviewed the agreements as well as Attorney Slusser, and I have no problem with it, but I would simply recommend that the school policy, number 233, dealing with suspensions and expulsions be modified and amended to reflect the waiver policy.
Yes.
I'll have.
So that's good, so we should add that to 16. We should add that as a?
233.
No, no.
Well, number two.
Oh, two, number 16.
Two, number 16, we should add that the school policy be amended. So, okay, so maybe we'll pull that one out and amend that?
And 20, this, the financial aid contract?
I'm sorry?
Number 20, the financial aid contract? Can you explain that? There's a financial aid consultant for the Hazleton area.
Mrs. Herman?
Career Center, practical nursing.
I can explain. Anthony Palazia has held a financial aid contract. He has the credentials to approve it through the federal government, so he is contracted for that, for a financial aid. So basically, we need his services in order for the OPM students to obtain their financially qualified for financial aid.
Is he a district employee?
He is not a district employee. That's why the contract was approved by Attorney Slusser.
Do you know what the fee is, Mrs. Herman?
The fee is approximately $10,000 and that is paid through the tuition from the.
Per, per, per group, per class?
It's for the year, yeah, per class, per class, well said.
Thanks, Lori.
You're welcome.
So between that and 22, that's, that's all I have on, on those first. But if we could change the motion for 16?
Sure. We'll add to, amend the motion item number 16. To amend policy 233 to include the waivers.
So we need a motion here?
I reviewed number 21, the local county's WIA agreement, and I did submit some corrections to that agreement that I provided to the superintendent earlier today. So that item has been approved.
So we're gonna have to change 21 as well then?
So do you recommend us pulling it off the agenda?
No, no.
You're just gonna amend the motion?
I just added one, one provision. Protecting confidentiality of the students.
Right. And what, we'll go back to the, to WIA and can ask them to add that, that provision.
Instead of pending approval.
Yeah, so instead of pending approval.
It's approved.
Approved by and with changes.
Thanks.
Okay, we okay with that?
So you want me to make a motion to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm.
Make an amendment.
Amendment.
I'll make a motion to amend 16 and 17, or 16 and 21.
16 and 21.
And 16 will be to accept the recommendation by the solicitor to change the school policy number 223?
233.
233 accordingly, right?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Zola.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Kay. Question? So on the amendment?
Any amendment, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, so on the approving items one to 22.
So on 21, I'll make a motion to add, we have to change that, we just have to add, by the change.
Approved with changes.
Right.
You making a motion?
He's amending 21.
He's amending 21, okay. Right.
Who? We have a second on the amendment?
A second.
Second, motion by Mr. Zola to make the amendment, second by Mr. Shemansky, question? Mr. Reba?
On the amendment to item 21, all in favor, say aye. Any against? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, we're back to approving items one to 22. We have a motion and a second.
Before we move on, item 22, I just want to clarify that the cost for the software is $179,000 for four years. So there is no increase over that four-year period. So it's $179,000 per year for four years, just for clarification.
We lost Mr. Mahalik here, so we're trying to get it back.
Yep, I'm here, Phil.
Okay, thanks.
On items one to 22, with the amended items 16 and 21, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'm gonna say no to seven and eight.
Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under special education, approve items 23 through 29 with one motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question.
If I could make one comment on item 26, I did review that agreement earlier today and I had corrections to it, but I would characterize the corrections not substantive, but dotting i's and crossing t's. So I did provide that to the superintendent.
I have a question, Bobby. Are these programs already running? It looks like they're summer programs, so does that mean they're already running? Which, well, 23, 20, 23, 26, 27, 28, are they already running?
They don't start until Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Huge University was here this week.
Okay.
And that was approved last week.
That's not on here though?
No, no.
No, that was already.
Thanks, Steph.
If you wanted to add 26, approved.
Yes, under, on item number 26, if we could amend that to say approved by Attorney Slusser's office.
Do you need to change it or just?
Approved.
With changes, yes.
I can make a motion for that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second, Mrs. Kay. Question? On the amendment?
On the amendment, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'm gonna no on 23, only because it still says pending solicitor's approval.
This, this is only the amendment. This is just on the amendment.
This is just the amendment.
Oh, on the amendment? On 20, okay. Yes, on the amendment.
Mr. Fium, who made the first and second on amendment, please?
Mr. Benomo and Mrs. Kay.
Thank you.
Vote on 23. On 23 through 29, with 26 amended, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Was 23 approved? Is that what we said?
So this is vote?
Okay, then yes.
Ayes have it, motion passes.
Next page, page five, under facilities and capital projects, recommend board approve.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mr. Shemansky. On the question? Mr. Reba?
For 30, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Guys, thank you for taking care of those scoreboards. Great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie, are we, are our guys painting these bleachers?
That's what I was.
I didn't.
Who is, how are we using the paint?
Do we have manpower to do this, bleachers before football season? I mean, there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of scraping before you even put the paint down.
It's fun.
Thanks.
So that's a yes.
Yeah, you're gonna do it.
Are you sandblasting or scraping?
Well, scraping and a good power washer would probably be a good start. I mean, sandblasting, we couldn't do that. I mean, they did that years ago.
Ronnie could do anything.
Ronnie could do anything. What's his mind to?
Media blast, not sand.
Under nutrition, approve items 31 and 32 with one motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Benomo, second by Mr. Zola. Question? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 31 and 32, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under transportation, recommend board approve transportation for the 2019.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question?
Is this, is this starting Tuesday then as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Reba?
Number 33, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under security, approve items 34 through 36 with one motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo. Second. Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question?
I would just like to add that Lorraine Brody has really been one of the best security officers that we have had in our district. She's here a long time, works hard, has a great rapport with faculty, students, kids, and I'm really happy to see that she's moving to full-time. And Eddie, when you see her, you gotta tell her, I said, congratulations.
Eddie, what school does she work at?
Where's she at now?
Freeland.
Freeland?
Freeland.
She was all over, Tony. I mean, I think, I think she's probably been just about every building in the district and anytime you need a. and anytime you need a to-go-to person.
She's there.
She's the one. Good job.
On items 34 through 36, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
On page 6, please. Under technology, approve items 37 through 39 with one motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Garcella. On the question? Mr. Reba?
On items 37 through 39, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, approve items 40 through 42 with one motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo on the question? Mr. Reba?
Items 40 through 42, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Under finance, item number 43, recommend board approve the 2019-2020 general fund budget.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Shemansky. Question?
I have a question. I'm just not certain. I know we, it was laid down here tonight. I didn't have a chance to go through it all, the paper, the budget that's being proposed. Are we going to the, where are we going with index?
We'll turn it over to Mr. Frazinski.
We'll turn this over to, we discussed this last meeting.
Fill everybody in, I hope, as far as, and obviously I'll take on any other questions you may have. I have in front of the school board and the administrators this evening 12 facts that have to do with the budget for 2019-20. First thing, we have increased class size in all of our schools in order to free up some teachers for the following reasons. First one is to reduce costs with Kelly Educational Services. This past year, we spent in a neighborhood of $1.3 million. We're lowering that down to $800,000, which myself and Mr. Lamanna will reconcile on a monthly basis to make sure that $800,000 is not exceeded. Part two to that is maximizing teacher schedules. Dr. Patty and Mr. Uflinger dug into every school schedule, regular education, special education, vocational education, made sure they had a full schedule for all periods of the day, again freeing up some teachers for other needs. For example, as in letter C, they reduced the need to hire any teachers this year along with any long-term subs that would be required for any teachers that are going out on any kind of leave. So, we have a pool of teachers there that will be able to step in rather than us having to go out and dip into our checkbook. Number two.
Bobby, on that, I see eight, I see additional long-term subs coming up.
That was from this prior year, 1819. This is for 1920. So, the long-term status is because they worked 127 consecutive days this year, so they get qualified for the long-term status, and they get that extra pay. But that was for 1819.
Okay, so, the ones that we're gonna be voting on later.
Will not be there next.
Okay, thank you.
Am I saying that correctly?
You're correct.
When we're saying increased class size, what are we speaking of?
Just to make sure every class is, what we did is we looked at the schedules, tried to maximize the schedules the best we could, make sure all classes are evenly filled, did some tweaking on some programs, and combined some classes that were able to combine instead of having two small classes, have one larger class. So, we're looking anywhere from, the elementaries are still the same, what the board approved and passed in previous is.
It's 27.
Yep. At each grade level, K to 2, 3 to 6, and 7th and 8th grade, 7th and 8th grade is 32, it's 30 and 27. In the high school, we're trying to make sure every class has a maximum anywhere from 30 to 32 kids.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Patty? I mean, with this budget, could you tell us how many more students we serviced this year than the prior year, or, I mean?
Just from, we met with Secretary Rivera in January, from the second day of school to the beginning of the second semester, we had over 1,000 new students register and less than 400 dropped, so we had a plus of 600 just halfway through the year.
So, we're trying to, we're trying to make a budget work, we're trying to do what we can with our space, and a big part of the reason is we have 600 more kids in our district than we did last year.
Correct. At minimum.
Right. And that, like Dr. Patty said, that was in January, so I'm sure we're well over that. We've had enrollments every day.
And that's correct. But we can't oversimplify it either by raising taxes, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we gotta, I think what they did was great, looked into classroom sizes, looked where you could cut.
And scheduling.
And scheduling and all that. So, you know what I'm saying?
I understand, Vinnie. I mean, I think the state needs to step up. I mean, we're doing the best we can, in my opinion.
And I think some of those points you guys are just talking about will be addressed here. Number two, new positions. As you know, in the past, we've always had new positions needed for whatever reason. This year, we have one dental assisting instructor. However, even though that's a new position, we're using the funds that we're not replacing the dental instructor who resigned.
Diesel.
So, the funds were simply, I'm sorry, diesel, I apologize, have simply been slid over to use for the dental assisting instructor. And part B to that, we have two part-time, five-hour office assistants. That was part of an MOU we agreed to back in early, or late 2018. So, again, those were two new positions, and we've been budgeting them the whole time. Minimal cost with the being part-time as far as not having to shell out any benefit costs.
And just to that point, Mr. Frazinski, we are still having our diesel program. Mrs. Herman was able to fix the schedules where we're still allowing that program filling in with other teachers in the career center to fulfill that need for next year.
Thank you.
So, are we short on kids in the diesel program? Is that why we're not replacing them?
No, we have kids in the diesel program, and we are using our other automotive teachers to fulfill that spot for those kids who are already enrolled in the program. It's just that our teacher did not retain the requirements necessary to teach from PDE.
Right. But we're not replacing them, but are there an overabundance of kids in the diesel program?
There are, there are four. There's 26 students in the diesel program. So, the thought process was to maybe use, well, to use the co-op coordinator and some industrial arts teacher that would be able to use, work in Smolentin, filled in for us several years ago, and Merk Diesel teacher that was there for 20 years, was taking sabbaticals and so on and so forth. So, we did use these people before, and we are hoping that we could sustain it until there's funds to replace the teacher. It's a much-needed program, and there are 26 students in that.
And how many are in the dental assistant program?
The dental assistant program ran for one semes, oh, well, ran for one semester this year. There are approximately 16 Level 1 students, and there are 12 Level 2 students coming in because we ran it last year with Mary Kuda, who is retiring this year, and she was gracious enough to run that program, which was a huge saving. I want to make note to the board, it was a huge savings for the district in the 1819 school year because we did not have to hire an additional teacher at that time. So.
But if we're saying, I'm sorry, Mr. Zola, if we're saying that there's an overabundance of kids in the diesel program, is it safe to say that we're not going to get away without hiring another instructor?
At some point, we have to.
So, then, we're going to have to add it into the budget, correct?
Ms. Sherman.
Not this year.
Ms. Sherman.
Well, then, we're not gonna service the kids then?
Yes, we have two instructors, the two instructors.
They're going half and half.
Going halftime to complete that service.
Correct.
Ms. Sherman, the dental instructor that was interested in coming our way, how long could we keep him at bay, or, you know what I'm saying? Because they're so hard to get, those instructors, I mean, and it might take a year for us to be able to hire this guy.
In the perfect world, you'd be able to replace the diesel teacher and hire a dental instructor, which is the first new program. We would have had such a computer technology. The programming came about five years ago, so, you know, that is the board's decision for the finances. If there's a need.
What I'm saying is, how long, I mean, have you talked to this guy, and does he know what the financial situation is?
I haven't talked to anyone, tell me no.
No?
That's not my role. The positions haven't been posted. I don't believe.
No.
Does he say dental or diesel?
You're talking about the dental instructor, not the diesel instructor. We're talking about the diesel.
Diesel.
Well, the only thing is, if the diesel program is viable, we should be, we should be doing something other than part-time teachers. I think that adds to students losing interest when.
It absolutely does.
It seems like they're not.
It's a gamble.
Yeah.
And again, we keep saying that we're supposed to be promoting this type of work for the students who don't want to go on the college route, but yet we're not giving what we need to give to give these kids that opportunity to choose this path. And there's a huge need for diesel mechanics, there's a huge need for just regular mechanics, there's a shortage for the trades. That's what we need to be focusing on, is to giving the kids what they need so that they can be successful in the trades.
It's just as hard, though, to find qualified instructors also, right? I mean, because, and they have to go back to college, and qualified people are probably making more money in the private industry than they would as what we'd offer them as a starting salary for a teacher.
But if we don't budget the position, you're not looking, and what'll end up happening eventually is.
You're losing.
We'll lose them.
Your co-op instructor will end up retiring, because he's gotta be at the end of his career here.
He is.
And you'll end up with, we'll end up funding a position that isn't budgeted. And that happened last year and the year, you know, so I don't know. I mean, why not just fund it? Because we know it's going to happen. I mean, it's inevitable. Education first, I guess, but.
Okay, number three sort of ties in with number one. The retirements and resignations, which we received throughout the end of 1819 now, there was 12 of them, we have not replaced nine of them. So, three of them we did have to replace, which, you know, helped with a savings towards our deficit here. Again, that goes back to the scheduling that we talked about in number one. Number four, as we've been stating for many years now, and it continues to happen, we're the lowest property tax rate in all three counties, Barb and Luzern and Schuylkill, and that's as of, again, 2018-19, we're still the lowest. Which ties into number five. Out of 500 school districts, we're 497 out of 500 for our amount of money we spend per pupil. So, we've been stretching the dollar as far as we can, but, you know, this takes effect, and it's, you know, it's hard, it's hard to go on day by day with just a little bit of money. The average, if you can imagine, for me, is about 12,000 and change is what we spend per student, and the average is about 15,000 and change.
I, I'm not really proud of that fact, first of all, that we were 497 out of 500 for per pupil, but what I would like, if you could get that to me when you have a chance, no rush, is what is our expenditure for administration?
Expenditure per administrator?
Not per. What, where are we as far as what we're spending for salaries and benefits compared to everyone else in this group of 500 schools?
I think you'd have to look at the size of the school district, Marie. I think you would have to ask them, school districts are size, similar to us.
Oh, are we doing that for the per-pupil expenditure?
No, no. But if you have a school district of 500 versus a school district of how many we have, obviously, a school district of 500 are gonna have a lot less administrators.
Well, we've had this size school district for a long time now, and yet we did not have half of the administrators we have now. So, if you could just get me that, I'd appreciate it.
Just to be honest, I don't know how we'll be able to get that for other districts. I don't know if that administration number is out there, but I will, just to be honest with you. Number six, again, part of the new basic education formula, there's a percentage in there that allows them to give you more money for the local municipality doing its part in their tax effort. The tax increase that we're recommending is the maximum we can go without going to a referendum vote, which is the index in the, all the exceptions we qualify for. Without this tax increase, our deficit of 2.6 million would increase by an additional 2.5. So, we'd be looking at a 5.1 deficit if that was not the recommendation. Number seven, property assessments. We finally got Luzern counties today, and two out of the three counties have gone down in assessments. Schuylkill was the only one that had gone up since last year, and it went up 0.4%, which is, you know, obviously less than one, it's minimal. So, again, without getting any help on the assessment side, the only other way to gain additional revenue locally is to raise the tax rate. Number eight, something that really needs to be noted, because checking with some school districts up the line, we've had no furloughs for our staff for this budget. We are preparing for our early retirement incentive, which is going to kick in in the next year or so, so we have those teachers that will be filling those spots as they retire. Number nine, this budget, even with the tax increase, is going to lower our projected fund balance down to 1.3 million. Again, due to the 2.6 deficit in this budget, but again, I want to make this clear, until the 1819 AFR is completed and audited, that is our projected fund balance after the approval of the vote on this budget. Number 10, some of the positives. The school district has established a new healthcare program that encourages our employees to use consumerism. We, administrators, have high hopes that this will reduce our overall costs. However, it's undeterminable at this point because we just began in January 1st of 2019 with this new program. So, we haven't been in this program, just approaching a half a year this week, and we hope that that would be a good turnaround for our district as far as saving money in the medical insurance. Number 11, in this budget, there is a before and after-school kids academy, which I believe is on your agenda this evening. The district feels that, I'm sorry, the administration feels that this will generate a profit. However, in this budget, we have it as a break-even program to be conservative. We did have to budget it on both the revenue and expense sides if we are going to continue with this program.
I'd just like to say one thing about that. Just running the numbers on the proposal that was given, they don't make sense to me. Since it comes down to $10,000 budgeted per school for supplies, with full participation, that leaves roughly 30 cents per student every day, and supplying them snacks and tutoring and this and that. So, I think Mr. Busher, correct is that your name? I think going along with his point that I would hate to see this program be implemented in the first year, not be successful, and then be taken out the following year. And even looking at, briefly, at some of these surveys for participation, with only three schools in that survey with a somewhat decent response rate for who would use it, the other ones will bring down that program pretty quickly with the small budget you have for supplies. So, I'm just curious on what the thought process is on that, and how maybe we can alter it to make it a better program, or make the numbers make a little bit more sense. I mean, if you have full participation, 40 students, $12 a day for budgeting for taking care of them for these four hours, I don't see how we're gonna pull that off. And that's on full participation. That window gets smaller with the least amount of, to me, it looks like in the, in the actual breakdown of the program, that most of the revenues would come based on late fees or late pickup. And if we're gonna be relying on those, that's not a really reliable source from what I see.
Ms. Druffinger, do you want to extend on that program?
I mean, we discussed this thoroughly at a meeting that you weren't at, so.
Okay.
I mean, you're not being federalist, I don't think here.
But I was there, and there were a lot of questions.
I was there too, but running the numbers, he's accurate with the numbers. We have gone, I've gone over these numbers.
I mean, I have.
I just, there's no way that unless, and you're not going to get 40 kids, there's no subsidized.
But this isn't a daycare, Marie.
Correct.
A daycare.
I understand that.
Why don't we go through the budget? There's an item, line item for this.
Daycare is a developmental program. Ours is an after-school academic program.
And I understand that, but. And I understand that, but the fact of the matter is, is that you need forty kids per school for this to...
Well, first of all, Marie, we're basically just announcing it this evening. I think when the other parents in the... Throughout the district find out that we're offering this program, I mean, I think we're going to see a...
How are you passing a program that we don't have all the answers to? Again, we just...
If you would come to some of the meetings, maybe I would...
I was at this meeting. Thank you, Mrs. DeCosmo.
I think once the word gets out that we're going to offer this program, we're going to have no trouble filling the...
And you really think that working parents who are working in the plants, making ten, twelve, fifteen dollars an hour, can afford twenty-five dollars a day per child?
This is voluntarily, it's volunteer.
I understand that, so who are you getting to volunteer? We need forty families to volunteer to pay every day to have their child watched before and after school. That's the part that you're not getting.
Where do these parents put their children when they are at school? There are other... There are facilities where some of these kids go, and we're not saying they can't go to those facilities.
But we were saying that because the month before, there were people here asking us why we stopped dropping their kids off at daycare. So it would behoove us to look at that because the cost to bus them to the daycare that they go to would probably be cheaper for us in the long run than paying for this, to have teachers come in and get forty dollars an hour for before and after.
It's not forty dollars.
It is what it's contractual rate plus benefits plus the Peasers. That's what it comes out to, about forty dollars. It's not per hour.
You are helping, in other words, you're going to say, you're going to deny children that need academic tutoring.
No, I am not saying that Mrs. DeCosmo, and that's what you do when someone's...
Okay, we got to get some order here.
Let's vote on the budget.
Let's move on.
This is a separate item.
Move on.
Okay, well, then are we going to discuss this when it comes up on the agenda?
Well, yeah.
Are we going to discuss that? Mr. Mahalik, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
He's there.
Can we continue?
Yeah.
Finish? Okay.
Yeah, number twelve speaks for itself.
Okay.
In this budget in many years.
I guess my question was, and I called Bobby on it, I mean, I remember in the past options, boards had options in order to decide that they want to raise it to the limit, that they want to go with all the exception to the index, or did they want to go over it? I thought I was going to... I thought that was going to come up tonight, that it might be two or three options for board members to choose from. I don't see that in this budget. And I just, I want to, you know, just, on the other side of the coin, you know, we have people out there, this is a letter that was sent from an eighty-eight-year-old woman in our school district, and her comment is basically, instead of raising taxes on properties to fund school districts, please charge renters a school tax if they have children in the school. And when new registrations begin for all students, this is a way of tracking whether or not they are homeowners or renters. And then her bottom little note says, "We sold our home because we could not afford the taxes and our other expenses." And she signs her name, which I wrote, and eighty-eight years young is what she...
That's correct, but...
Oh, wait, let me just, please let me finish. I know when I ran three years ago, and I went door-to-door, like all of you did, to get petitions, it's a job nobody wants to have. And I said it then, when I walked, and I went and got signatures, more and more people, that silent majority out there, would talk to me about their taxes and show me, you know, sometimes they make choices on what they're buying or what they're purchasing because of taxes, or, you know, that they're contemplating selling their homes on it. I know we have a responsibility, and we have one to our students in that, but we also have a responsibility to the taxpayers and to all these people, so...
We'd have to change the laws. I think we would all love to see us be able to charge renters. I mean, they really are load, overloading apartment buildings in the Hazelton area.
But I've also heard in the past, oh, there was no one at the... When we passed that budget, no one cares. And I've heard that. I've heard that in past years, sitting at this table. So they're out there. There's a silent majority of people out there that need help.
Somebody...
But that's where I think the state has to come in too. And I agree. I don't think an eighty-year-old, I see it on my side, that older people paying property taxes, but the state has to come out with something to alleviate that and put on a sales tax or whatever.
And I think we have to, as a district, though, make sure that we cut every extra dime that we don't need to spend.
And we have, and I think Mr. Krasinski has done a great job of doing it.
He did a great job. This is not directed at Bobby.
I know, but I think we have done it.
I know our administrators' hands are tied, to an extent, on what positions could be cut, where you could... I get that. I'm not looking at our administrators at all here. So I'm saying to you, I think there are, there's still fat in our budget here, in our budget that could be trimmed. That's all.
Can you... Let's go on, but I was going to say, can you give an example where you think this...
I don't want to start because it's going to cause big issues.
Well, we've been...
I mean, I'll talk to you all in private, but I don't want to start.
We have been to these budget meetings.
I've been to every one. I didn't miss one.
I think we need to move on here.
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Reba.
Number forty-three, Mr. Benomo.
Yes.
Mrs. DeCosmo.
Yes.
Ms. Kay.
No.
Mr. Mahalik.
Yeah.
Mrs. Scarsella.
Yes, and I just want to comment that it was a very hard decision for me to say yes to. And I do commend the administrators, you know, for all their hard work, but I think the problem actually is the state. We don't get enough state money, so that's where the issue lies. Thank you.
Mr. Shimansky.
Yes.
Mr. Van Holten.
No.
Mr. Zola.
No.
But kudos to our administrators. I think you did all you could.
And Mr. Feum.
No.
Motion passes five to four.
Item number forty-four, recommend board approve a tax resolution for year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question. Mr. Reba.
Mr. Benomo. Yes. Mrs. DeCosmo.
Yes.
Ms. Kay.
No.
Mr. Mahalik.
Yeah.
Mrs. Scarsella.
Yes.
Mr. Shimansky.
Yes.
Mr. Van Holten.
Hello.
Mr. Zola.
No.
And Mr. Feum.
No, but I'd like to say a few words here, and I didn't want to get into it. I was going to get into it before, but I wanted to keep things moving. First of all, my no votes here are no reflection on any school board member and their decision and no reflection on this administration because I think the administration worked very hard on this budget. But I have to agree with a lot of our school board members here. I think the state needs to step up. I've spoken over the last two weeks to many people out there, taxpayers, after they've seen it in the paper regarding tax increase. I've gotten calls and seen people at the store and a couple of social functions, and the state needs to look for alternate sources to fund us. First of all, I don't believe we get enough money as... And we don't get per student as much as some other school districts. And Mr. Zola and some other people said, Mr. Cosmo even said, the state needs to step up. Mr. Shimansky, you know, there's property tax reform. There's people out there on fixed incomes, some senior citizens, some not, just regular taxpayers who don't have children in the district, and every year, they're bearing the burden of this tax increase by us. And at some point, we just have to take a stand and say, we need to come up with something here. The state needs to come up with something to... Some alternate ways to fund us. And that's my decision. It was hard, but, you know, we need to take a stand and say, let's do something different here. We need more funding. We need to find alternate ways to fund us. We just can't keep burdening the taxpayers. You know, we have the Peasers, the retirement system. I know after July first, new hires are going to 401K, but there's no projection on any savings for us yet for the next couple of years. Those savings need to be passed on to us as soon as possible. There's other ideas. We just need to explore, then we need to lobby our people in Harrisburg to make some changes. And I understand we need to move forward, we need to run the district, and I laud the administration for the work they've done, but, you know, it's... Especially when you sit down and talk to people out there, it's just tough. It's just... That's all. Mr. Uplinger. We did... We're on number forty-three.
Number forty-five.
Forty-five.
Recommend board approve a homestead resolution.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo.
I would like to say one quick comment, and it's in honor of Mr. John. He asks me every year, and he's not here to ask me this year, but he would always ask how many properties in the district don't have to pay any school tax. So in other words, the homestead exclusion is, we're proving it at three hundred and ninety-four dollars, I believe. So how many people don't pay any school tax at all? And the number's six hundred and eighty-four properties. And then there's properties above that, because it creeps up, that only pay a couple bucks. So, you know, we should be proud of our homestead. We're probably one of the largest homesteads in the state because we started under Act fifty, and we have two funding streams, the earned income tax and the gaming money. So I just wanted to put that number out there, six hundred and eighty-four.
Tony, does that include the three counties?
That's the total in the three counties, yeah.
And that's to you, Mr. John.
So we're on the question.
Mr. John. Number forty-five, then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Under Finance, also approve items forty-six through fifty-three.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question.
On the question, Tony, after what you just said, could you explain to us, number forty-six, who gets these refunds? Like, are these people that challenge their taxes or...
So these refunds come by a couple ways. Mostly, it's by people that challenge their taxes, and then they already paid their tax for that year, and we owe them the difference on what it was lowered.
Is it...
That's a big part of it. There's court orders that come through. Sometimes we need to give a refund from a court order, but primarily, it's from tax assessment.
Ballpark figure for this year, would you have one?
I could get it for you. I don't have it handy.
Need every penny we could get, and we have to give the refunds.
Typically, just in general terms, we do see more increases than decreases overall. So usually, year by year, we see the assessment going up. However, we just did get the new assessments today, and Carbon and Luzern actually went down a little bit, Mrs. Krasinski, is that correct? And Schuylkill had a very fractional increase. So we didn't do as well as we've done in prior years with assessments. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
On fifty-one, can you... Can someone just explain that?
We, under fifty-one, if you remember the last time Mr. Bradley was here, he said there was going to be an opportunity on refunding our Series two thousand fourteen bonds. So this is a resolution, and it changes until they actually do the closing, so we're setting an earmark of two hundred thousand so that the savings have to be at least two hundred thousand in order to initiate this. We did not budget this, so if this happens, it's extra for the budget because it's a one-time thing. If we would put it in the budget, it would have to come out next year, so we're kind of looking at it as a two hundred thousand dollar windfall if it happens.
It doesn't extend our debt further out than that?
No, no.
Okay.
No. So how to kind of think of it is, when you refund your house, typically, the interest rate goes down and you're paying less per month. This pays you all upfront, the two hundred thousand, so the debt structure is the same time.
Same timeframe.
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Just one more. Forty-nine, recommend board approve the stop-loss renewal agreement with Sun Life.
Tony, I don't know if you want me to... That BSI has, always goes out and gets proposals for us for our stop-loss. Now, stop-loss is for any large claims, and our deductible is two hundred and fifty thousand. So this protects us against any large claims that we would have, which unfortunately, we do have many. So in order to keep that deductible at two hundred and fifty thousand, our premium went up a little over, I think it was seven, seven something, Jesse, if I'm not correct, went up almost two hundred thousand. But looking at it, about the amount of claims you could potentially get, I think it's the better route to go, rather than raising your deductible, but you would have more people getting up to that deductible of three hundred or higher thousand.
So we don't bid this out or anything like that?
They... BSI will go and they'll contact Sun Life, they'll contact other different providers that do this, and then they come back with their best recommendation. Now, we were with Sun Life at least one year that I'm aware of.
No one else would bid.
No one else would bid.
Right. Bobby, is there a reason that it's not in the line of coverage of what will be approved now?
I'm sorry, Ms...
Is there a reason it's not in the line of coverage on number ninety-three? Was that always separate?
Yes. This is on the health insurance side. Okay, this comes out of our object number that BSI gives us, that's usually in the seventeen million dollar range that we pay out for self-insured. This is a part of that. The one out there is for property insurance.
Okay, so it's never been included?
It's separate, yes.
And there's... Primarily, there's no commission on this. When we went with BSI, one of their functions was to act as our person that would bid it for us. So in the past, there was commission built in, so this is direct with the company, no commission.
BSI doesn't get anything?
No.
So there's no fee by BSI?
No. It's part of their fee to do the service to bid it, but there's no additional commission for them.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Mr. Reba.
Items forty-six through fifty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Item number fifty-four, recommend board approve the following bills that agree to allow...
Motion by Mr. Benomo. Second by Mrs. Scarsella on the question.
Do you need a motion then to not have a July meeting and have possibly two meetings in August? Do you need a motion for that?
It shouldn't have split.
Sorry?
Not part of this.
Okay.
It's a pain in the bills on us. This is the bill.
No, but if there's an event, there's no regular...
Yeah, that should be split from paying the bills, right?
Yeah.
Well, this is just saying if there isn't a meeting, so you need to deal with if you're going to have a meeting or something separate. So if you do have a meeting, this won't take place. This is just if you decide later not to have a meeting. Does that make sense?
If we don't have a meeting...
Kind of the dog chasing the tail.
Yeah. If we don't have a meeting in July, then they have. Yeah, if we don't have a meeting in July, then they have, so go ahead.
We usually don't have a meeting.
Yeah, okay.
There's usually not a meeting due, right?
So, what, basically?
Well, there is one scheduled, so.
Right.
It's up to the board if they want to have a July meeting, we usually don't, but it's up to the board.
So, in the event that we don't, tonight is the only night that we can say, or have you allow us to pay the bills.
Could I make the motion that we have no meeting in July and have two in August?
Well, we already have a motion on the floor for this.
All right.
So, let's vote on this and then make your motion.
Okay.
How's that?
All right.
So, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills, on the question.
I agree with Eddie on this, but go ahead, that's the only thing we've agreed on all night.
On number fifty-four, Mr. Benomo. Fifty-four, I'm going to say yes to all, no to, no to K. This is the Cosmo.
Yes.
K.
Mine are different, hold on a second, please. I am a no on G and K.
Mr. Mahalik.
Yeah?
Mrs. Scarsella.
Yes.
Mr. Schamanski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Holken.
Yes, and no on G.
Mr. Zola.
No on G and K.
And Mr. Field.
Yes. Mr. Schamanski, want to make that motion now?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we do not have a July meeting, and we have two meetings in August.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schamanski. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella, on that question.
Why do we need two in August?
Well, you usually do, you usually do.
Like, one in the beginning, one at the end?
Yeah, because you remember, they're always right before school starts, I mean...
So, does that mean two sets of committee meetings as well?
Well, no, I mean...
Well, we did it the last couple of years, I remember.
You've been around, you know there's always been usually two meetings in August, because something has to be approved before school starts.
If you need something approved before school starts, we always schedule one near the end.
Well, probably one of the meetings will be in conjunction with the committee meetings, you get what I'm saying?
So, so also, since this is a new motion, not on the agenda, do we have anyone from the public that wants to comment on that motion?
Eddie, can you repeat the motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we suspend our July meeting, we have two meetings in August, one being in conjunction with our committee meetings, and one at the end of the month, for general business.
If necessary.
Just one committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Reba?
On the new motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ice habit, noting Mr. Mahalik's no vote.
He just woke up.
Okay, under Superintendent of Schools, approve items fifty-five through fifty-eight with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo, on the question.
Just, it's a comment more, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-nine, this is what I'm saying about getting the agenda so late. All of these things require us to go onto Board Docs, look this stuff up, and then still ask questions of someone, if you don't understand the lists on Board Docs or whatever. When you get this a day and a half before a meeting, it's not, it's impossible to get all this stuff done.
I think one of the issues here with this was we canceled committee meetings this month, the whole budget meetings, and that's obviously affects people being able to see these items. So, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Zola, but the committee meetings were canceled, so I think...
Well, I thought, I thought Mr. Mahalik made a recommendation to have an executive session before tonight's meeting to kind of work on some of these things, but that didn't get approved.
Nobody responded to me, Mr. Zola.
I know that, Mr. Mahalik, and I thought it was a good idea, and I brought the initial question up, so I didn't respond only because of that reason, it was the initial question, but...
I know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess there were a few items that were executive session material, but some of them weren't, so I mean, we couldn't discuss all of them, but I, do you have any question, any questions?
Well, some of it, if you see a lot of no votes, it's just, we just didn't have time to look it up. I didn't, anyway.
I will not hold anything against you, Mr. Zola.
Well, thanks, especially your big hand.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Reba?
Numbers fifty-five through fifty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah, I'm a no.
Only because I just didn't get a chance to look at all this stuff.
On all those items?
Yes.
Okay.
Ice habit, noting the two no votes.
Mr. Uplinger?
Approve items fifty-nine through seventy-two with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeCosmo, question?
Brian, it looks like there's, like about fifteen leaves of absence are ready for next year. I mean, is that normal?
Yeah, unfortunately, yes. We do have a lot of medical leaves that take place with, thinking just out loud, we roughly have seventeen hundred employees across the district, and unfortunately, it looks like a lot when, I mean, it is, it's a lot, and then we suffer the consequences when we're trying to find substitutes, or we're trying to find replacements, if they're long-term, if they're out for the entire year, so it's difficult.
Take this for the teachers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Reba?
Numbers fifty-nine through seventy-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
On page ten, approve items seventy-three through eighty-five with one motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella, on the question.
So, the long-term sub in number seventy-eight, that's, that's, that's for last year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's the one twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
And just to further clarify that, the date in the motion is the actual date that the employee reached the one hundred and twenty-seventh consecutive day.
Okay.
Therefore, they didn't reach it till June, so therefore, now we're approving it now.
Okay. And eighty-five, just a quick explanation?
I could answer that one. In the welding shop, I believe, determined the floor was ripped up for, I guess, how old it's been, and she wanted to get some new flooring in there, and she offered the money that she had extra in her budget for the classroom to pay for that, so we're moving that to the maintenance account where that needs to come from.
So, you're just transferring?
Transferring money, yes. It requires board approval when it goes from the thirteen hundreds to the twenty-six hundreds.
And will that go off for bid, or is it under the?
I believe that's under the quota.
Right, that's the way I...
It could just be purchased. I think Mr. Carrato's looking at that project.
From Florida?
It's hard to see.
Yeah?
Okay, Mr. Reba?
Numbers seventy-three through eighty-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
On page eleven, we do have an addendum, and the names that will fill in for number eighty-seven is Cheryl Petrowski, number eighty-eight, Mary Adele, and number eighty-nine, Judy Verkusky.
Is that your pick?
So, approve items eighty-six through ninety-four with one motion.
Motion by Mr. Benomo.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Scarsella, on the question.
On number ninety-four, Tony, how much longer do you think we're going to do it on our own before we maybe give it to a realtor?
Mr. Carrato, I again will have to thank him and his people, did a great job of cleaning it up, and he was there and showed it to several people. We thought we were going to get some proposals, we didn't get any bids. We did put a date certain in it, so, but I would ask you if we could at least just put it back out for sale and don't put a date in it, and then the next time we have a committee meeting, maybe we can talk about...
Okay, all right.
Other options.
I had the same question asked, wouldn't it just be better to put it with a realtor now? I mean, we tried it on our own, I mean, wouldn't it just be better to put it out?
And we do want to sell it before winter?
Yeah.
Because by October, we're going to start paying oil bills again.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think we should just put a realtor in. Do you want, you want a motion? Can we, to do that, or?
I guess the biggest problem with that is, who do we pick for a realtor?
Well...
Should we ask for proposals for realtors?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, can we amend ninety-four to, say, and put an RFP out for real estate agents?
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to amend ninety-four?
Mr. Field, we also need an amendment on ninety-three, our solicitor. Come on up, Jeff.
I thought the amendment would read...
I, you know what, I...
HAISD authorizes Robert Payne and Assured Partners Incorporated to immediately begin soliciting proposals. Add that to the end of motion ninety-three.
Let's amend ninety-four first.
Let's amend ninety-four.
Amendment, and second...
Do you have a motion?
To put out...
Motion by Mr. Zola?
Yes.
Yes.
Second, Mr. Schamanski?
Yes, yes.
Question, motion, roll call, or?
What is the, what's the asking price on the vinyl house again?
One forty.
Either one forty-five nine or one forty-nine nine, is it? One forty-five nine?
It's one forty-five nine.
One forty-five nine, I believe.
And is there a, do we have a range of, I mean, I know probably publicly, we don't want to mention how low we're going to go, but I just would like to revisit, I mean, if we don't get an offer anywhere nearer what we're asking, again, there was a suggestion to donate that to, you know, possibly a shelter.
Bobby, I think it's part of the budget, I think Bobby has it as part of the budget of selling that.
Yeah.
It's in the budget.
Well, no, if you can't get the price that we're looking for...
Well, why would we give it away?
...we can take forty thousand dollars, and we could give it to, you know, charities, I mean...
Yeah, I think that's something, it's probably something we can look at as, as down the road.
But also, the taxpayers have to pay for that, so that's not...
So, let's look at that when, down the road, and see what comes in, yeah, we could look at it down the road. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Mr. Reba?
Okay, on the amendment for an RFP, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
On ninety-three, on the question, I thought, when we gave this insurance broker back to Joyce Brothers last year, it was because we had an agreement or a contract with them for two or three years, and that, this was the last year of that. But I remember during the conversations that we discussed that we really didn't need an insurance broker, that the district, it's not required to have an insurance broker. We're paying, for two reasons, one, I think what I learned when that Brown and Brown got involved in bidding, that if you have an insurance broker, the two or three big insurance companies only want to deal with that insurance broker, which kind of bumps out other insurance companies, which hurts our bottom line, and we found that out with Brown and Brown, who saved us a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, because they had an insurance carrier that would quote them a price, where other insurance carriers denied them a quote because they weren't our broker. So, for two reasons, I don't think it makes sense to have an insurance broker if that's going to limit who's going to bid on our insurance. We, and we learned, we saved a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that one year, because Brown and Brown was able to come in with a quote from a different company.
So, we need, we need an agent, we can't access the insurance company directly, an agent has to.
Right.
So, basically, there's two ways to do it, if you have the broker, the broker's supposed to then get proposals from all the companies out there. If you have an agent, then there would be several agents, and they would each represent of different companies.
Right.
The problem with the second, the second way of doing it with the agent is, who do you assign those companies to? Because there's a couple, one or two companies that have preferred pricing or more competitive than the other companies.
So, how did it work with Brown and Brown that year?
They came in with a company that the other agents who are dealing with didn't use before.
So, were they, were they an agent then?
They were an agent, yes.
So, we found them, we tripped over them, basically...
At the conference.
At a conference?
Yes.
So, I mean, maybe when we're ready to do insurance, maybe we trip over, you know, we look around some conferences and find people that do this, right? I, I'm just, I just, I think we learned that there's a potential for savings, and when your budget is as tight as it is, I think you got to squeeze everyone in that topic.
Vinnie, that came up at a recent IU meeting, and they, I basically got the same answer, they also use a broker, it ain't basically...
Well, I'm sure, because it does this person, a you, this company, not necessarily because of the name on this, whoever it would be, ABC Partners or whatever, they have a huge advantage when it comes to bidding insurance for our district then, because the companies will only deal with the brokers. I mean, that's just the bottom line.
Right.
So, we're limiting ourselves in the future.
I don't think there's any way around it, though.
Well, there is, you just don't appoint a broker, I mean, that was discussed last year.
Okay, do we want to amend ninety-three, that was suggested by the solicitor, do we have a motion for that, or not?
What was the amendment?
Well, it said to...
I can read it, Mr. Field.
Go ahead, read it, immediately.
It's the motion that's stated there with the addition at the end that says, and HAISD authorizes Robert Payne and Assured Partners Incorporated to immediately begin soliciting proposals.
So, that you have a policy in place, that exists a policy lapse?
In October.
In October, right?
October twenty-second, to be exact.
Didn't we just vote on this not long ago?
Yeah, we, last, last year, that's what I'm saying, at that meeting where we appointed Joyce Brothers, because it came up, it came up at that time, too.
I think the last thing that happened, Joyce was in, but he needed a letter from us, and I gave him a letter because he needed to go to an insurance, I think that's what happened.
Yeah, there was something there with a letter, there was something... I would like to change my vote to no on ninety-three.
We didn't vote yet.
We didn't vote yet.
We didn't vote yet.
I didn't hear what she said.
She wanted to change her vote on ninety-three, but we didn't vote yet.
Yeah, we didn't vote yet, yeah.
So, are we, is there a motion to amend this, or not?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Schamanski.
To amend it, as recommended by the solicitor.
Mrs. DeCosmo, on the question.
To do...
Vote to amend, Mr. Reba?
So, this is just to amend ninety-three, to add that language?
Correct.
Yes.
And what is it?
Immediately to begin to solicit bids.
So, that's not going to help us, though, save money on getting a better deal, right?
The current insurance doesn't lapse until October twenty-second of nineteen, so he has that, the time from now, until then.
He could have all the time in the world, because...
Yeah, we ran into this last year.
The insurance companies aren't going to give anyone else...
But unless he has the broker of record certificate, which is now held by the pre, the Joyce...
Oh, yeah.
He won't be able to get any bids from any of them.
Well, when does Joyce's run out?
We said this the last time.
I guess till after October.
October.
Well, then, this is kind of way ahead of time here. Joyce, Joyce Brother is still our broker until October, right?
Is this Assured Partners, is this local?
Our coverage, our coverage ends in October, I guess.
Where are they based from?
They're out of Wilkes-Barre.
Oh, they're in Wilkes-Barre?
I think we should table it till we could look at it. This is another thing, this came up on this agenda, it's never been discussed at any of our meetings, I just, I would make a...
So, did they, we had interviews for the broker of records the last time, did these people interview, because they just came out of nowhere?
This, they actually purchased Mr. Payne's firm, you probably remember, Eastern Insurance was the firm Mr. Payne worked for, Assured Partners purchased Eastern Insurance, so that's who he works for now.
Okay, so did they interview?
Mr. Payne did, Assured Partners, the company did.
Yeah, but the company was Eastern, so they gave us what their proposal would be, but Assured did not, so we would have no idea what they're offering. No, he wasn't, he wasn't with Eastern, he was with Assured.
Well, he, they didn't, he didn't interview for this now, for what we're talking about right now, right? We didn't hold interviews.
This was four years ago, or three years ago, right? Four years ago, three years ago.
The other possible solution might be to have the current broker sign a consent to allow Robert Payne and Assured Partners the right to begin immediately soliciting proposals.
Oh, I'm sure he's going to do that.
Well, it depends if he has a...
Yeah, oh, yeah, here, take my bread and butter.
If you get the business from the district, he might be willing to do that.
I would make a motion to table ninety-three.
When did we, when did we decide this? How did it get on the agenda?
So this was discussed several months ago after it was given to, it was given to Mr. Joyce. We renewed with him in October. And at some point after that, I don't remember which month, if it was January or February, it was talked about switching it to Mr. Payne. And at the time, it was said, we pay for the premium upfront when the, when the policy's renewed. So Mr. Joyce was paid for the year. So if we would have switched it in January or February, Mr. Payne was, would have had to service the account for the rest of the year, October, and not, for, for no pay. So at the time, I thought the board said bring it back up in June.
Where, when, when I, when was it, where was it discussed, I guess?
It would have had to have been an executive session for the time of material.
It was an executive session. It was in an executive session when you discussed it.
We'd have to look at our-
So is that executive session material?
I'd have to defer comment, probably.
Was Chris there?
I don't remember the exact meeting. We'd have to look at both.
I, I just thought I remember, Tony, and I hate to differ, but I just thought I remembered saying, we had to give it to Joyce, or, to Joyce Brothers again because we had a contract with them and that one year in between, we left them, but then we gave it back.
To honor the third year.
To honor the third year.
Right.
And then I, and I thought, I remembered saying that we didn't need to have a broker for that reason, because it, it limited the ability for other people, other agents to bid. Because I remember when we called around, other agents would say, no, you have a broker, we won't touch it.
That was the meeting that Mr. Beranco told us we didn't have to have-
That's right, yeah.
A broker of record, and it didn't behoove the district to do so.
I've only been with the firm for several months, so I'm just-
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just looking your way. I'm sorry, I'm not addressing it to you.
Tony, I think it, it seems to have brought up interesting questions. Maybe we should run this through Congress. I mean, is he going to be able to get us the best price if Billy is still broker till the twenty-second of October? You know what I'm saying?
I think that's why Attorney Rockman asked to put that language in there. That would authorize him to, because he'll need a letter from us saying he is the broker for the renewal.
But he isn't.
He would be for October if you approved this.
Oh, okay, okay. In October.
Does it work that way, though, if you have someone with a letter and they're not going to relinquish it? Because a few months back, we were told that we had to vote that way because if not, then we would open ourselves up to litigation because they had a broker of record letter and we weren't honoring that. So now they still have a broker of letter record in place, but now we're telling someone else that they don't have to honor that and can supersede that letter that he has and go out and get that.
We're not saying, I think what it comes down to, our coverage ends in October for this current year, so we can't wait till October to start shopping around new insurance.
But is that not what happened when we switched from Dryfoos to Joyce?
That's-
Dryfoos wouldn't give up the broker of record letter-
Yeah, that's right.
And we could not have him start soliciting because he didn't have that letter.
That's how our renewal date got changed to October. It was July. And we actually switched agents mid-year that time, and that's how it got switched to October.
So how is this any different, then, is my question?
This is just doing the same thing that we, we did in the past.
Yeah.
I mean, this, I, it's making the same mistake again. We got, when Brown and Brown opened our eyes that if, if you don't have a broker, you're going to be able to get cheaper prices, more competitive prices. Now we're just going to go back and make the same mistake. We're going to appoint a broker, which is going to limit the competitive pricing.
Is that true?
It's true.
We don't need-
Could be, yes. Wait, we don't need what? We don't need-
We don't need a broker? Is that what it'll be told?
Are we going to make a statement? I've been in the district for twenty-five years and this was always a hot topic, bonding insurance renewal, so.
You'd think it was going to change.
What is the commission that each of these, uh, agencies make off of this?
We're not probably proving that information.
I mean, this is-
Is it a ballpark figure? Is it thirty thousand, is it a hundred thousand, is it three hundred thousand?
If I had to ballpark it, I'd say fifteen, ten to fifteen percent of the premium, which the total premium now is sort of about three something?
Three sixty or three seventy.
So thirty thousand dollars. All of this over thirty thousand dollars.
I mean, this showed up on, for the first time on, on the agenda a day, a day and a half ago. I, I don't know when anyone had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Payne or Assured. I, I know we didn't have any formal meetings or, or anything like that and we're, and it's trying to be pushed through before October, which he's not going to be able to do anything prior to October because we already have a, an insurance broker. Just something doesn't seem right. I don't know. I, I, I would still say it should be tabled.
I mean, without the meeting in July, we, we may have enough time if we dealt with this in early August. I'm just throwing that out. What's that called?
What did you say?
If, if we did table this and we dealt with it at the early August meeting, whoever gets it would probably have enough time for the renewal for October.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to have insurance October twenty-second because it runs out. It's done.
So they have to work ahead of time.
Hey, don't just drop your insurance. Didn't we learn this from the last-
But we have to have it more approved, I believe, because the, of the way the policy runs, we have to have it approved prior to October twenty-second.
Right. All right, well, we'll do it in our August meeting, then.
All right, well, as a point of order, we have this amendment on ninety-three with a motion and second. Do you want to withdraw your motion and second?
Yes.
You made the motion, Mr. Schamansky, and Mrs. DeCosmo made the second. Tabling this.
What are we doing?
We have to get, there's a motion and second on this amendment. We gotta have to get that off the table. So we, if you want to table it, we could then take a motion to table it to August.
And what, and what are we doing? And when we table this, what, what are we going to, call them in or what? How is this, what are we doing if we're tabling this? What's the purpose of tabling this?
What's the purpose of tabling it? So we can call them in?
Who's, want to call both of them?
Well, I, I think the purpose for tabling it is just sort of work to talk about it at some point.
Yes.
At, at a future meeting. We just, we just need to talk, do we need it? Don't we need it? How do we, how would we proceed without one? Uh, would we contact past insurance companies and say, hey, look, we're not going to have a broker of record? For instance, that Brown and Brown. Do you call them and say, well, look, we're not going to have a broker of record. Our insurance is due in October.
They may not have something to, they can cover some Brown and Brown. I remember that there was something not covered, if we're placing-
We might be able to come up with two or three prices from other companies.
Wasn't it something that was not covered by Brown and Brown?
No, there was-
Somebody has to make a motion to table it.
Motion to table number ninety-three.
But Tony, do we have to take the motion off the floor?
You have to take it.
Mr. Schamansky withdrew his motion and-
The amendment.
The amendment.
Yeah, that's-
It was an amendment that was withdrawn.
Okay, motion to table ninety-three.
Motion by Ms. Kay. Second by Mr. Zola on the question. Mr. Reba.
On the motion to table, Mr. Benomo.
Yes.
Mrs. DeCosmo.
No.
Ms. Kay.
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik.
Is he there?
We need to get him.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here, uh, no on the, uh, motion.
Mrs. Garcella.
I don't even know what I'm doing. Um-
Voting to table it or?
Table.
Table or not?
Yeah, table, yes.
Mr. Schamansky.
Yes.
Mr. Van Oakland.
Yes.
Mr. Zola.
Yes.
And Mr. Fum.
Yes.
Motion to table passes seven to two.
Tony, can we find out about that date of the twenty-second? It's going to be a, 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 because I, I thought I, someone made the comment that this will allow him enough time to go out and shop around and then when it was caught up-
Well, whoever gets it needs time to shop around, right?
Well, yeah, they need time.
You need time to shop.
But again, if, if Billy Joyce is the broker of record till the twenty-second, how, how could we get the best bang for the buck?
Well, that's, has to be clarified. Is he broker of record till the twenty-second or is the insurance policy in play till the twenty-second?
This just bought us time to, to look into all this now. That's all it did. It, it just bought us some time to make a, a proper decision that benefits the, the bottom line, the dollar.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve eighty-six through ninety-four excluding ninety-three.
We have a motion and a second on the question. We had questions. Mr. Reba.
All in favor to eighty-six and ninety-four less ninety-three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
On page twelve, approve items ninety-five through ninety-eight with one motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Schamansky. Second by Mr. Benomo on the question.
I guess we have our questions for the before and after School Kids Academy now. So, um, I did ask this when it was first brought up in executive session. So if the daycares are running it, they are not required to have any special, um, positions there such as the nurse security administration. But if we're running this as a school district, are we going to be required by law to have a nurse on-site, security or an administrator?
Security is already on-site. The buildings are open at seven o'clock. Administrators are in the building around seven o'clock as well. Teachers are coming in to start the day around seven, seven fifteen. There, the nurses come in even after the students are there, the middle school students are in. Nurses come in a little after that. Counselors, the same thing. They come in a little after. So we're fully staffed already. Uh, what we'd be doing is basically providing two teachers per school in Arcata Eight buildings, which would be ten, so with twenty teachers, and, um, providing the students with an academic environment to, to look at, uh, providing the district with, and providing the student basically, and more importantly, with higher achieving, higher achievement. Tutoring program, homework help, if they need to have some counseling. I know we, we've talked before, uh, about additional counseling opportunities. That would be available to the students. So there, there's a lot of positive here. We, and, and if I may just continue a little bit with, we just approved a budget that, um, came down from nine million dollars down to two and a half with the, you know, the work and the dedication from the staff and the, and the board and, and I, I appreciate that very much. We have a problem. We're bleeding and we need to stop bleeding. So this is an opportunity for us to look at the possibility of stopping that bleeding and providing the district with another opportunity that provides students with more access to academics. So, uh, go ahead.
Okay, I, and I, and I understand that, but at first it's, now tonight it is to benefit the students, which I'm all for. But on the budget facts, it is to generate a profit. So it has to be one or the other, but the numbers are not showing that it's going to generate a profit.
I think it was budget neutral, wasn't it?
It's, it's in the budget as budget neutral.
It's in the budget. It's budgeted to break even, to be conservative, but the program is to generate a profit. It says that right here. I'm all for having people have their children taken care of. I was a working mother myself, so I understand that all too well. But I also had four children, so twenty-five dollars per child per day would not have been feasible because you can't make enough money to pay that. So is there going to be a discount for multiple children? Like, that's not in here. So I just think that we don't have all of the information. Plus also, like, if there's inclement weather, it's going to not open at seven, but parent schedules are not going to change. So like, the daycare's still open at that time. So there's a lot of variables that we need to discuss that aren't quite clear enough for me to be able to vote yes, is all I'm saying.
And I, I appreciate that. And, and I'm, I'm just saying, we already have those, those pieces in place. Say we have a, a delayed start, the program would be a delayed start. The, the parents, for example, an elementary, um, parent would have to wait until ten-thirty before they could drop their student off at the, at one of the buildings.
Yeah, but they start at seven and, and, and those plans aren't going to allow them to-
No, they're not.
They're not going to allow them to say, well, okay, the school isn't open till ten-thirty. You don't, or, you know, you can't bring your child till ten o'clock.
No, no, you're not understa, just one minute. If, say that, that, um, an elementary, an elementary starts at eight-thirty in the morning. If we're on a delay, it's ten-thirty. So the parent has to make that adjustment anyway. So basically, they're, they're pushing to ten-thirty where if we had this program, they would be coming in at eight-thirty because the, the-
But they're not making that adjustment because they're dropping their child off at their daycare that's already open regardless of the snow day.
But there are also some that are closed. You'll see that run across the TV where, you know, they close.
Brian, I, you, we went around and around on this. I, I love you. I love the, I like the idea. I, I do. But I, I questioned you. It, it came up, it only appeared like three weeks ago. It, it, it was given to us at a, a budget, an executive budget session, which later I found out we shouldn't have been discussing it in executive session. But then, then it, it turns up on this agenda a day and a half ago. And it still has never been discussed in this room, open to the public.
He sent a survey out.
I think it's, well, you could send a survey out, but I don't think that's what the law says. I think you have to have public meetings, so you're not-
But we are not running a daycare-
It doesn't matter what we're running.
That requires state input. We do not require that.
You could, you could call it anything. You could call it tutoring, you can call-
No, it's not a daycare.
I think if, I think if you're really being truthful, and listen, I'm not against the program, Linda. I'm just saying, be truthful to the parents and the public so that they know what they're getting into.
I'm not against this either, but-
Because if that child, if, if we, for some reason, this program doesn't work or you have to stop it or whatever the case, those people are in deep poopoo because now they have to find daycare for their children because it's imperative for them to go to work. When I ask questions, and I had a list of them that I asked at that meeting, at, at least ten or fifteen, I hope that went into the policy, which I'm going to ask. I haven't seen the policy yet. I, I think I, did I hear it went out on an email or something?
No, you have it in front of you.
I have it. Here it is. Here it is.
And it's on board.
Okay, well, we got the policy tonight, here, sitting at this meeting. So I didn't have a chance to look at it, to read it, to, to make a couple notations in it to see, did you cover, like, what's the standard operating procedure if a child is off sick with a doctor's excuse?
Yes.
Do we refund them?
They still have to pay.
You don't refund.
No, we didn't.
Okay, well, I, then I don't know that before I vote on it here.
Yeah, but that's the same thing at anywhere you go. It's not refunded.
I didn't have, I didn't have five minutes to look at that policy tonight, not even five minutes. So, okay, I mean, uh, show me the policy on the program. What is the SOP if the child does not show up for class? And my answer here, or my question here is, uh, what steps do they follow if a, a child doesn't show up at class tonight? So now I'm the teacher and I go through my roster and Johnny Joe's missing. What do I do? Do I check, did he attend school today? Where do I check that? Do I have availability to the computer system to see whether that child's in there? Uh, did Johnny Joe's mom just forget to call him off? Do I have to now call Johnny Joe's mom and say, hey, Johnny Joe isn't in class? Where is he? Is he sick or? Because that could be important enough that the kid isn't sitting on a bus in a, in a parking lot somewhere.
But the teachers do get, the teachers do have that in the morning.
Linda, without a standard operating procedure, that this is what you do. If Johnny Joe doesn't end up in that seat tonight, here, you pull out your standard operating procedure and you say, this is what we need to do. Who's going to do it? There's only two teachers. Forty kids, two teachers. What do you do? Do you call that teacher over while you go down to the office or whatever and start making phone calls? There's just a lot of questions that I would like to see answered before we approve it. I think it's a great idea. I think it would help. I think it was generated by the Y not having their program anymore.
No.
And, and wait a minute, and there's talk out there that we ran a program before. We never, as a school district, ran a program. The YMCA ran a program.
Yeah, they, they had their program.
The Y ran a program.
The Y ran a program to the schools.
So I, my, again, maybe we ought to be looking at partnering up with the daycares that are out there. And you know what? Offer our facilities for nothing. Here, you want to use our, our school for two or three hours after? You run it. You run the program. You know, maybe that's the answer instead of the school. Because when the school district gets involved in stuff, we're, we're not in business. We're, we're not in the mindset of running a business. We're in the mindset of running a school district. And, and we know that because of all the, the mistakes that we make sometimes business-wise because we, we are running a school district. So again, it appears three weeks ago, it, it shows up. I read, I, I read an article on social media that was posted by, by a PTA president saying, you got to come to the meeting Thursday night because they're, they're going to bring this program forward and we got to support it. We got to be there to- I didn't even, I didn't even get the email, I didn't even get the email yet from, from the district, from the superintendent.
This is an option. We are not telling parents that they have to do this.
No, I realize that.
This is an option out there.
But we can put something in place and then have it fail.
I agree with you with a lot of your points, and I think it's a work in progress. I think we should...
We should have what all have done before we agree on.
Between now and...
But he does.
But I think we should vote to get it started. And then, yeah, I'm sure there's bugs that are going to have to be worked out.
I keep the process all planned out.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Are we going to accept welfare? I mean, if the welfare pays for it, so all the center city kids...
But this is what it is not.
Mr. Uplinger, you could explain his policy of coming up.
Those other ones are funded by the state. We are not a daycare. That is what you are not getting, and that's what the state funds is a daycare.
So then this is going to...
This is an academic program that parents can choose or not to choose to have their kids there.
So we're...
So then, then this is what this is. This is going to be for parents who are affluent, who can afford $25 a day. And if you can't afford it, if you're a working parent, you can't afford...
Don't do surveys and see where some of these parents bring their kids. And it's not all affluent parents. There are other parents.
So if you can't afford $25 a day, you aren't going to be able to bring your kids to this program, is what you're saying.
Well, go see the kids that go to Trinity Lutheran and other schools, and they're not all affluent parents that have their kids at their school.
And they also have subsidized funding for them.
Trinity does not. And I know that for a fact.
But the daycares do. My children went there also.
But this is not a daycare. This is what is not getting across here. It is not a daycare.
But those students that can't afford it probably need it the most.
A daycare is infant preschools.
Wait, am I right or wrong? The students that can't afford it probably need it the most. They're the students that go home to empty homes where there's no one there to help them with their homework. If I haven't heard that 100 times or 1,000 times at our meetings in different schools, that these kids have no support at home, there's no one there to help them with their... So we should be running a program in their benefit, not for the people that can afford to have a tutor or have a teacher tutor them. We need to be running it for, and we're saying, no, we're not. You're not included in it. If you can't afford it, do that.
Out of 10 schools, if you see, and this is Mr. Uplingers, this is your, this is your graph. Out of 10 schools, there's only three that will be running this program.
Let me give you a little background on the survey. It was sent out to over 8,000 people within our district, 425 replied. I can't tell them to reply. I've asked them twice to reply. That's what we got. Those are the numbers. So if the numbers were, if we had more individuals reply to it and take the time to take a one-minute survey, then we'd have a better result. I can put it out again.
That's not going to stop the way the doors are open. They're going to be knocking saying, my child needs this as well. And they should have it.
All the information that was asked about tonight is in the handbook that was provided. So, and it's, I'm going to put this out. It's my responsibility as a superintendent of schools to bring to you opportunities and programs for the betterment of our students. You are the nine board members. You decide what you want to do with it. That's all.
Brian, you didn't present it that way the first time. Now, let's be honest. Don't put, don't dump this on the board. This was presented as...
I don't make, I don't vote, Penny. I don't vote.
You presented this, Brian, as a way of making $1 million for the budget. That's how this was presented.
That is a, absolutely, that's a distinct possibility that that could happen if we were to be provided.
That's how it was sold.
If we got 40 students per building.
It never came up about the tutoring until I mentioned about daycare. When I said, in order for you to run a daycare, you have to have registered people, they have to inspect the place, there's a whole list of stuff. Then it went to all of that other stuff.
All right, let's, all right, we have comments. So let's move on this. Mr. Reba.
I think the supplies is underestimated.
On numbers...
I just have to, two things. What did the Y charge? $28 a day?
Okay.
The second thing is, why not about whether you do have to have a nurse on because you can't count on nurses. Might be coming in early and might be coming... I don't think they had to be.
No.
They never had to be in the buildings when the Y was there.
They were never in the building. They were never in the building.
No, they were never. And so I don't think that's going to be a problem, but I would, the fact that it's in a public school, I would just, you know, run by somebody to check it, you know, with the state or something.
Sure. And just, just to add, I did contact PDE just to make sure that we didn't have to run it through human services. And it is, it's a PDE-supported program. It's like 21st century.
Right.
Mrs. McBride, also, if the children were at the YMCA program, they could get subsidized help to pay for it.
Well, I see, I don't know. I know they were in the buildings, but I never knew anything about it. But I know that there was never nurses or anything there. And I had thought it was even higher than what it would be in the short term.
Okay, thank you.
That's true. It's all insurance.
Thank you.
All we're asking is that it be thought out before it's put into effect because you're going to affect a lot of people.
And I'm just concerned with, you have 40, if we get full enrollment, which would be great, and you have two teachers, and we're not being a daycare, but we want to do academic activities, we want to help with homework, help with tutoring. You know, the teachers are at their max in their classrooms when they're dealing with 40 students. If they have to help with 40 individual students with homework and academics and tutoring, how are two teachers going to do that in two hours?
Right.
It would be very difficult. And that's with the max enrollment. You know, and that's what you need essentially to make this program work. And that's my concern, is the number side of it. And the supply, you know, we, it was budgeted $10,000 to run the program, $1,000 per school, you know, $12 per day per kid, 30 cents per kid per day, to be able to provide these hours of enrichment academically. And I just don't see that working. I'd rather see us put together our ideas to come up with a better plan together to be able to make this project or this program more attainable for everyone, but also more productive in that sense.
Right.
I think you did a great job coming up with the concept, but I think we could definitely refine it because, again, if it doesn't work, I don't want it to disappoint students next year, like you mentioned.
Just to make another point, and I appreciate that, Mr. Van Holkland, thank you. The, there is no option in Freeland, period. There's nothing for parents at all. There's nothing in Freeland. And since I've been here, I've been here two years now, and I hear that constantly from parents in Freeland that we don't have any help here. There is nothing here. Okay, well, thinking one day, here, this is an idea that we could possibly help the Freeland area, along with everything else.
So the recommendation, Brian, at one point was, start a pilot program. Pick two or three schools, start a pilot program, and learn what might happen, what happened to that idea.
Again, it's up to you guys.
No, it's not up to you.
I'm bringing a recommendation. If you want to change the recommendation, change the recommendation.
Let me make a pilot program. Start it in two or three schools, see how it works.
Not going to fight about it.
Okay, all right, let's vote on this one way or another. Mr. Reba.
Numbers 95 through 98. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No on 95.
No on 95.
No on 95. And no on, I'm no on 96.
91.
I have been 96.
I'm on no on 96, too.
It's 96.
And before we, before we vote on 97, I don't even know who we're talking about.
I don't either.
I mean, how do you vote to terminate, take a person's job when we don't even know who we're voting on? How did you vote on that, everybody? I, I mean, am I the only one that doesn't know who the person is?
No, I don't know.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we can have that multiple back information because this, this employee can turn around and...
Correct.
You know, a grievance, and we shouldn't have that information because we would ultimately then be the judge and jury if it should go further than that.
Well, I mean, we don't even know, all right, forget the E. What are the charges?
If I may interrupt, we did discuss this in an executive session. You do know the person. You don't know his employee number, but we do know the person.
I believe we did discuss this in the executive session, last executive session.
We did.
You do know it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did you, did you get my no votes? 95, 96, 97?
Maybe I'm forgetting about it. So if I do, I apologize.
95, 96, 97.
I don't think he was...
All right, well, let's pick on 98 if we're done with the other ones.
We're done.
Okay.
Okay, so number 98, this, this student, and I'm all for this, I just like a little information. What program, maybe Mrs. Januzzi is there, what program would this student be coming into?
He's MDS.
Oh, MDS, okay.
Yep.
So, and we are, and I agree, we are definitely not a business, but certainly the opportunity to gain some revenue, if it's not taking away programs from our students, you know, maybe we could have Mrs. Januzzi send out just an email to, you know, that we've got some space available in our MDS, if we have, which we probably don't, in our autistic classrooms. There are districts, you know, relatively close by that may absolutely look at that as a viable option for their kids.
Right. Moving on, so before we go to the audience, I just want to thank Mr. Uplinger and the staff. I had several people call me and thank me. A few weeks ago, the parents of the students or the pool league...
Yeah, the YMCA, because of the closure of the YMCA, they had to seek additional info, or an additional cloud, lack of a better term, an umbrella, and they sought out the Freeland YMCA to continue the program, the programming for the YMCA swim team.
Right, exactly. So I had several calls, emails, and I contacted Mr. Uplinger and very quickly, within the next week, had a meeting with several of the representatives. And I was glad to have helped there. And I've had several calls over the last week thanking us for their help so that that situation was rectified. And thank you. I just wanted to relay it because they had also asked me to, so. Anyone from the audience wish to be heard on anything else? Dr. Childs?
My name is Robert Childs. I'm a resident of Freeland. You folks are clearly looking for a lot of classroom space. I realize that. When you converted the swimming pool, there was very little voter pushback. When you, when you started to talk about converting libraries, it got a lot more voter pushback, okay? Maybe more than you expected. You're not even talking about the gyms. I mean, if you tried to shrink the gyms, there would be lynch mobs out there and probably a few more burnings at the stake, resemble witch trials way back when. However, one thing that I would ask you to reconsider is a proposal to have a central junior high school. The studies have been done on that, maybe three, four years ago, three years ago. At that time, they said you could save 18 teachers, which you could certainly employ in a variety of positions in this district. You could save 12 classrooms. Now, that will accommodate between 300 and 350 kids, okay? Even considering transportation costs, the savings to the district would be between a half a million and a million dollars per year. Everything points in the direction that it would provide better academic programs for those at the upper end because you could have honors courses that you can't have in small middle schools. On the lower end, the, I'm assured by the teachers, by the administrators and teachers, that you would have better ESL classes, you would have better classes for your, for your special ed programs. Would you get pushback? You betcha. You have a lot of parents throughout the district who want to make sure that their children stay within 50 feet of home. You have a number of teachers who are wed to the current programs and are not enthusiastic about changing. But you've got to look at the savings that are involved here, and you've got to look at the academics. You've also got to look at the social situation. You're allowing students to begin mixing at 7th and 8th grade instead of arriving at different academic levels at 9th grade and different social levels at 9th grade, and that's not acceptable. Not at a time when 9th through 12th grade is when you make your mark in this, in this world. Just to mention to you, just by way of brief background, I was part of the board when we went from a junior high school system to a middle school system. The, the thinking behind that at the time was coming out of the RAND Corporation think tank. Their thoughts were that the fewer times a student has to change schools, the better the psychological situation is. However, it backfired in this district because what happened is, is when we...
15 seconds remaining.
Thank you very much. What happened in this district is, given the rental situation throughout this district with people changing, changing locations, constantly moving from different school to different school, one of the, one of the problems that's been identified by the students themselves is they can't make friends because they're not in one place long enough to do so. And so a central high school would actually solve that problem. It's an irony because the original move to the middle school situation was based on the idea that you were going to psychologically and socially help students in a way that didn't work out in this district. I know, Mr. Uplinger, that you have been in favor of a central junior high school. The savings can't be denied. You'll get plenty of pushback. I would suggest to you, though, that you consider that again amongst the ways of trying to make this district academically better and socially more encompassing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have motion to adjourn? Motion by Benomo, second by Mrs. Garcella.
Thanks, everybody.
Long one.